Okay, I'm gonna seek approval of the minutes from May 1st.
So.
And I have to second it? We're both in favor, right?
Yes.
All right, all approved. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is really just to discuss. And as you have already seen, this is on the city council agenda. And one final review of the proposed ordinance on the Fair Rent Commission. I believe that all of the edits that were proposed from the last meeting are in the new draft.
That's correct.
So we will, at this point, if there, I don't know, we probably could have met at 6:00, Armand. You know, I feel like this point that we could, unless you want to have any other discussion.
No, I think I think that we create something that fits the statute. And if we need to make changes in the future, then we'll have, then we will do that. But I think until we need to go more in depth, I don't, I think we just keep it as basic as possible to meet.
Just to fill you in, I was thinking, and I mentioned it to Anne too before you signed down, that maybe the mayor is now has, the mayor has to appoint the committee now. And so maybe it would be a good idea to get the committee populated and have them have a meeting and they might have ideas or suggestions as to how to go from here, you know? And we do have some good suggestions that were made from the public hearing and we could incorporate those at a later date. Or maybe just end up having the committee adopt some kinds of regulation. You know, regulations that they can adopt that don't need to be really part of the ordinance. But it might be a good idea to just leave the draft as it is for now until we can decide, you know, what more we want to do with it.
I agree with that because I think sometimes some of the, some of the things that are recommended aren't necessarily policy or statute.
Right.
More of a procedural type change and that would happen within the committee. It's the commission itself, correct?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Right, that's what I mean, yep.
And I think, I think sometimes people have difficulty differentiating what is a ordinance, what is a policy and what is procedure.
Yep, yep.
So with that, I, you know, I think we're in agreement. I'm not sure we need a motion to pass the ordinance.
Just to move it to this, move it to this, move it with the
Make a recommendation.
To move as, as with changes to the council.
Yep. So with that, that's your motion?
Yes.
And I'll second it and all in favor.
Aye.
All right, so really that was primary purpose of our meeting. I did, you know, speak a little bit with Heather. I'd love to get Sergeant Balthus off the committee conversation. Talk about having some ordinances that we can actually take out, that there are no more applicable to 2023. And he was very excited about it. He thought, oh, there's a number of ordinances that really are, are not pertinent to this time. So if possible, if we could invite Sergeant Balthus to the next meeting with some recommendations that we might have. To, I, I feel like we should be doing that with state statutes as well, but we have no control of those. We're just, I'm sure needs to, hopefully, I think it was Andrew Rohrbach when he was state representative said, as soon as we put a new statute in place, we should take 10 away or multiple statutes away or off the books. So I'm going to try and do the same thing with the ordinances and that'll be sort of a few meetings, you know, for us to look at what he's recommending.
Now, teen ordinances away, do they have to go to a public hearing? Or is that something we can just remove?
I'm gonna ask corporate counsel.
That's a good question.
I didn't, I didn't hear the question.
So the question is, if we are looking to eliminate an ordinance, does it need to have a public hearing?
That's a good question. Let me look into that. I'm not, I'm not quite sure. It, I would think it's a matter of questioning. There might be some that do and some that don't. If, if we're going to eliminate one because it is just obsolete and doesn't apply to anything, then I would say you can eliminate it. But if you were going to eliminate an ordinance just because you didn't like it, I think that's another question.
Right.
So I think it has to depend. I think the answer is it depends.
Okay.
All right, so as we go along, we can make that judgment.
All right. So who should reach out to Sergeant Balthus? You know, I do that or ask the, okay?
I would, I would think it would be the chair, yeah.
Okay, and Heather raised her hand on my behalf to reach out.
Sure, she could do it.
Yes, that'd be great. So expect that we'll, you know, perhaps we have a meeting with really just that intent. So I, are there any other discussion? We should do that. Let's not meet for a while. I think it'll take him a little bit to
Yeah.
Come up with a list.
August, yeah, I would say August at the earliest.
That sounds good, Armand.
Yeah.
August.
Yeah, I would say, I would say, I think August.
All right, so let's look at August.
And obviously if something pressing comes up in between, we can always set up a meeting.
Right.
But I don't think we have anything pressing at this moment. We did, we did a lot the last five months.
August 7th? First Monday of the month?
That should be okay. Let me look at my calendar, but I don't. We have a city council, council meeting that night, so that will work out, yeah? Yeah.
Sounds good. All right, and so unless there's any other agenda items that might be proposed to us by the mayor or our corporate counsel or anyone else, we will not have a meeting until August 7th. All right, and a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And I'll second it, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Beck.
Nick, are you going to be on for the regular?
I'll be at the city council.
Hi Dave.
Hey guys, hello.
Okay. Okay, Small Cities Committee is now meeting. Present, we have myself and Dave Oliver via Zoom. Okay, so Kerry won't be here tonight, so number one. Is it 189 Old Burville Road, both approve a subordinate, to subordination. The Northwest Connecticut Community Bank is described in the treasurer's email of June 1st, 2023. All right. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, all right. Any discussion? Okay, I read it over. We're just, we're in the same position we were the last time. This person's refinancing, there's plenty of equity in the House, a lot, so
Very good, sir.
It's no risk to us and they're getting a good deal here, so we're helping somebody out. Okay. No further discussion?
No, sir.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Right, okay, two, business by members. Any, any business?
Other than how are you?
Yeah, no, great, how, thanks.
Good.
Okay, we won't even move that number two. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, we are adjourned, okay.
There you go.
There we go.
6:20 now. And so I think what I'll do is I'll call to order, we have a lineup of meetings to conduct this evening. So let me start with our first item on the evening's agenda, and that is a public hearing. For the record, this is a public hearing held by the city council on WPCA. It is 6:30 PM, Monday, June 5th, 2023. Council members participating in person are Councilman Waldron, Councilman Manicchia, Councilwoman Ruette, Councilman Cavanero. And participating via Zoom, I have Councilman Oliver. Before we open this public hearing, could we please stand and pledge the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, the purpose of this evening's first public hearing is to solicit citizen input regarding proposals for participation in the 2023 Neighborhood Assistance Act. Before I open the meeting for public comments, could we have the public notice read into the record?
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Councilmen of the City of Torrington will conduct a public hearing on Monday, June 5th, 2023, starting at 6:30 PM in the City Hall Auditorium at 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut, to review and discuss proposals for participation in the 2023 Neighborhood Assistance Act program. The Neighborhood Assistance Act program provides tax credits to businesses and corporations that provide funds for an approved proposal. Proposals can include job training, crime prevention, daycare, and programs that provide services for the elderly, economically disadvantaged, and disabled. Public is invited to attend in person or by Zoom. In-person attendees will be granted up to three minutes to comment. Public comments may also be submitted in writing to the city clerk's office by email to city underscore clerk@torringtonct.org or by mail to the city clerk's office. Written comments received before 4:00 PM on June 5th will be forwarded to the Board of Councilmen for their review and consideration. Neighborhood Assistance Act proposals are available for public review in the mayor's office. Further information can be obtained by calling the mayor's office at 860-489-2228. An equal opportunity employer, all interested parties are invited to attend and be heard dated at Torrington, Connecticut, the 30th day of March of May, 2023. Carol Anderson, City Clerk.
Thank you, Carol. All right, at this point, I will open this hearing up to the public for public comments regarding the participation in the 2023 Neighborhood Assistance Act. And because it is a public hearing, I'll ask for comments three times. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to address the board regarding the 2023 Neighborhood Assistance Act? And final call for public comments regarding the 2023 Neighborhood Assistance Act. Seeing and hearing no comments, I will declare the public hearing closed. Declare this public hearing closed. This public hearing is closed. All right, let's move into the second public hearing of the evening, the purpose of which is to solicit input regarding sewer use fee for the year beginning July 1, 2023, ending June 30th, 2024. Before we seek comments, could we have the public notice read into the record?
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Councilmen of the City of Torrington, acting herein as the Water Pollution Control Authority, will hold a public hearing pursuant to Section 7-255 of the General Statutes on June 5th, 2023, immediately following the previous public hearing starting at 6:30 PM in the City Hall Auditorium, 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut, to set the sewer use charge for the year beginning July 1, 2023 and ending June 30th, 2024 as follows. For residential users, an amount not less than $346 and not more than $430 per dwelling unit. For all other users, an amount not less than $346 and not more than $430 per 65,000 gallons of volume of flow. The public may attend in person or by Zoom. In-person attendees will be granted up to three minutes to comment. Public comments may also be submitted in writing to the city clerk's office by email to city underscore clerk@torringtonct.org or by mail to the city clerk's office. Written comments will be forwarded to the Board of Councilmen for their review and consideration in advance of the public hearing. All interested persons are invited to attend and be heard dated the 24th day of May, 2023. Carol Anderson, City Clerk.
Thank you, Carol. All right, I'll open this portion of the hearing to the public for comments regarding the proposed sewer user fees. And again, the same thing, I'll call for public comment three times. So second call, is there anyone from the public wishing to address the board regarding the 2023, 2024 sewer user fees? Final call for comments on the sewer use fee for July 1, 2023 to June 30th, 2024. Seeing and hearing none, I will declare the public hearing closed. I will declare this public hearing closed. Public hearing is closed. All right, that's it for the public hearings. Let's move into the regular city council agenda this evening, which in and of itself is a pretty heavy lift. So for the record, this is, I am calling to order the regular meeting of the city council on WPCA Monday, June 5th, 2023. And it is for the record now 6:30, 6:00 PM. Participants are as previously cited. Councilman Waldron, Councilman Manicchia, Councilwoman Ruette, Councilman Cavanero in person and via Zoom is Councilman Oliver. I did receive notice that Councilwoman Hona will be joining us late and as soon as we see her, we'll make a note of her attendance. So jumping into item number one on the agenda is a roll call vote on the Fair Rent Commission ordinance. I will entertain a motion by the Board of Councilmen to adopt the Code of Ordinance, Chapter 24, Fair Rent Commission. Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Manicchia. Discussion. Yes, please.
So we have gone through, you know, several different edits of the proposed ordinance for the Fair Rent Commission. And just for the record, people know that we, this was actually a statute that was sent down to the municipalities to have in place for any municipalities that are 25,000 or more. And so we've done our best to come up, thank, thank you to our corporate counsel, Dick Michelle, who's on Zoom for his work on it and the members of the ordinance committee. We also received public comments, good public comments and suggestions. We've made a decision as an ordinance committee to keep the simplicity of the ordinance, get the commission in place. And, you know, at, at the time that it's actually in place, either take some of those recommendations that were made and put into either regulations or procedural kinds of things. We need to get it placed by July 1st, so I am looking for the council's support to adopt this ordinance tonight.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Other questions or comments?
I just wanted, can I add something?
Yes, please.
Yeah, to piggyback off of what Councilwoman Ruette said. I think that what we have here is a good blueprint for what is necessary and required by this, by the state. And will allow the commission to do what, what the state is, is telling them, telling them they need to do. So, and we can always make changes at a later date if we need to add things, delete things. And some of the things are procedures or policies which the commission could set up.
Thank you, Councilman Manicchia. Other questions or comments regarding the ordinance? Hearing none, because this is a roll call vote, I'll go to the Zoom screen first, Councilman Oliver.
Mute. Sorry, it was unmuting. No, I'm poor, yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you.
Yes.
Councilman Manicchia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ruette?
Yes.
Councilman Cavanero?
Yes.
All right, this is affirmative. And I'm sorry. Oh, Kerry is here. Councilwoman Hona?
I'm also in favor of it, thank you.
Excellent, okay, good. All right, so motion passes. Good work on that. Now I just have to find members to populate that.
Yeah, now it's your job.
That's my job, right? Okay, so moving on to item number two. I will entertain a motion to accept the proposals for participation in the 2023 Neighborhood Assistance Act as presented.
I'll move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette.
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Manicchia. Right, are there questions? The, all of the proposals were included in your package. I know I'm shuffling papers here just to make sure that I have everybody listed. The applicants are at Advance, Kids Play, Primetime House, Susan B. Anthony, and the West Cornwall Public Association. No, West Hartford or West Cornwall, I know there's a better name for this. It's West Cornwall Public Library Association. All right, questions or comments?
Just a comment, Mayor, this is an excellent program. The work is actually on the nonprofit agency to solicit those C corp organizations that are eligible for the tax exemption. And I was happy to see so many proposals, so good program should pass.
Great, and thank you for your assistance on some of the meetings that we had on that. Other questions or comments before I call the vote? And again, because this is a roll call vote, I'll start on the screen, Councilman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hona?
Yes.
Councilman Waldron?
Yes.
Councilman Manicchia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ruette?
Yes.
And Councilman Cavanero?
Yes.
All right, unanimous, great. Thank you both. Thank you for both of those. All right, let's move into, again, a roll call vote on the sewer use fee. I will entertain a motion by the Board of Councilmen, here and acting as a water pollution control authority, to accept the recommendation of the WPCA Administrator and Public Works Director to set the sewer use fee for the year beginning July 1, 2023 and ending June 30th, 2024 as follows. For residential users, the fee will be $392 per unit, excuse me, per dwelling in it. And for all other users, $392 per 65,000 gallons of volume flow.
So moved.
Thank you, I heard Councilman Oliver and Councilman Manicchia. Questions or comments?
Do I have one?
Yes, Councilman Cavanero.
Yeah, informational, what was last year's number? 346?
346. Yeah, 346.
So the increase is due to just cost of things, generally speaking?
Okay, yeah. As I laid that, laid out in my memo. One of the major, last year, we intended to transfer money out of the capital fund to try to minimize the increase. We're getting caught up with more of the real costs, what we see from the, from the upgrade and the new processes being put on. And on top of that, inflation, the cost of chemicals. You'll see sludge disposal is, is quite a bit of an increase.
Is, is that's a one-time only? That?
Which one? No, they're not one-time only.
Whatever that sludge remediation.
No.
That's gonna be ongoing.
That's a regular process.
Fair enough. So do you, you expect this, this delta between last year, this year to be sort of replicated again next year?
I think we're finding our, our place where we're, I mean, there's gonna be increases.
Yeah.
But I think we're trying, sort of finding our spot from the upgrade with the new processes putting on.
So there will be a leveling, you think, next year?
I, I
I know, I'm not holding you to it, I'm not holding you to it, I'm just asking what the anticipation is.
I, I think, I think we're, where we are, we're gonna have more gradual increases after this.
Yeah, basically what I'm asking is some of these are one-time only costs or one-year?
There's no one-time only cost in this cost. Oh, the one-time only cost is the fact that we undershot our predictions last year.
Okay.
So, so we're coming, we're, we're kind of caught up to that.
Yeah.
I feel.
Okay, all right, fair enough, thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Towsey?
Just, just one. I don't know, maybe I'm assuming too much, so the, the new upgrades should essentially make it more efficient so that would help with the leveling of the costs? Is that what? Where we're?
There's more, there is efficient, efficient equipment was put in, but there's a lot more equipment. To explain, like, driving force behind the upgrade was phosphorus removal, which made, so we have equipment that the flow, all the flow coming into the plant needs to be, for seven months, needs to be pumped up into this building. That stuff never happened before. It was all gravity. So now you have that electricity increase. That process also uses a lot of chemical. If you look at line items, the chemicals, quite an increase. If you go back, chemicals might have been at 40,000, now it's 340,000. So, thank you.
Additional questions, if any?
I do have one. When we upgraded the building and updated the processes, did, I mean, were these things that we had to do because there's new, like, environmental concerns or something? It just kind of seems crazy that we have this great new complex and it still is costing more to do the actual work? Is it because we just have more requirements on us now that we have to do the, like, for instance, first removal?
Yes, the phosphorus, the EPA directed the amount of phosphorus we have to treat to. And it was also designed for future limits that they foresee in the future.
My only comment is, if you haven't been down there, and I haven't been down since Ray was in your position, but it is a good tour. And, and actually, Torrington should be pretty proud of our facility. I know, I say it with a snicker, but it really, the operation of, of our facility is really amazing, so. I know, I always hate to see an increase and I appreciate you saying that this is gonna level off and that, you know, the five-year capital improvement plan that you're putting in place beginning July 1st. I think will also give the council a little more information in terms of what's been required, you know, EPA and, you know, the other influences that we have no control of within our municipalities, so good, bad, or ugly, it's just the reality of it, so. I think we should set up another tour.
Yes, anytime. Actually, I, I do have a report from, a little piece of good news. Titan Bond used to come out with the average cost of, of sewer fees around Connecticut, and they haven't done one since 2019. But at that time, the average cost was was $520 annually for communities. So we're still well under that, and that was four years ago. I'm not saying it's good news for any increase, but.
No, I appreciate it. And those were municipalities that were equal to our size or?
Is a, an average of around the state.
Thank you.
I would just add that the plant is substantially complete. We're just waiting for the right time to do a ribbon cutting over there. So not only will you get a tour, but I think this council, especially, there are several council members. that were instrumental in making the decisions to bond this and get that upgrade done to meet those mandates. So we'll try to work on that this later this summer.
Absolutely.
Now it's too hot.
Not when it's, well, I don't know. If you want the full effect, it's really, you've got to be there in the warm. All right, this is.
I don't understand the joke. Is there a problem?
All right, if there are no other questions from Mr. Towsey, I will call this vote. Last call for questions. All right, let me call this, starting again at the Zoom table. Councilman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hona?
Yes.
Councilman Waldron?
Yes.
Councilman Manichia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ruette?
Yes.
Councilman Cavanaro?
Yes.
Right, unanimous. Thank you. All right, now we get into the regular city council agenda. I would entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public in accordance with Section 4, subsection E of the City Council WPCA Meeting Rules of Procedure. Thank you, Councilman Cavanaro.
Second.
And second by Councilman Manichia. All in favor? Any opposed? We are open to the public for comments.
Steve Ivey, Torrington citizen. Before the vote, the council votes on the budget tonight, I believe that citizens, the people of Torrington should know the truth about what got us into this mess. If we ever hope to get out of it, we need to face the fact that we have a fiscal crisis, not because of the pandemic, or our location, or inflation, or any other excuse. We have a crisis because this mayor and this administration have failed to attract and retain enough new businesses and employers to pay the bills. This failure means that the burden of paying our bills has again fallen increasingly on local homeowners, small businesses. I've spoken to other leaders, other cities who have successfully developed economic programs, and I'm convinced that we didn't have to get into this mess and that we can do a lot better if we make it a priority. The people of our city deserve better. Thank you.
Still open to the public for comment.
Hi, Keith Farrell. I'm also on the DTC. I would like to know tonight, when we do talk about the budget, if we can have some sort of idea of what's the plan going forward? Because whatever the reasons we're here, whether we end up having to cut or raise taxes or both, I don't see any sort of plan to make this different in next year, five years down the road. As inflation continues to rise, as someone who wants to raise a family here, like, what's the plan? How do we keep Torrington from sinking lower and lower? Because all I've heard, with all due respect, is reasons why we can't do that. We need to find some reason to do it, some way to do it, whether it's you know, getting in extra help to advise, finding, you know, opening up committees. I don't know what the answer is, but we need to obviously have some sort of plan to go forward. So I would look forward to hearing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell. Still open to the public. All right, moving on. Item five. I'll enter, I'll do this in each subsection. So 5A, I'll entertain a motion to accept the special joint meeting minutes for the Board of Public Safety from May 8, 2023.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Manichia.
Second.
And second by Councilman Oliver.
Sorry, Gary.
Questions or comments on the minutes? Seeing and hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Yes, I think I don't think it was at that one.
Okay, one abstention for the record is Councilman Cavanaro. Okay, item 2B, I'll entertain a motion to accept the public hearing minutes for the Fair Right Commission from May 15, 2023.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Manichia. Second by Councilwoman Ruette. Questions or comments on these minutes? Seeing and hearing none, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item C, 2C, excuse me, 5C. I'll entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from May 15, 2023.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
And second by Councilman Manichia. Questions or comments on these minutes? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Item 5D, I'll entertain a motion to accept the special budget meeting minutes from May 15, 2023.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Manichia.
Second.
And second by Councilman Waldron. Questions or comments on these minutes? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Abstention. Okay, so. Well, this is the 15th that we're on. All right. Item 5E, I'll entertain a motion to accept the special joint meeting minutes from the Board of Finance from May 22, 2023.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Manichia. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Waldron. All in, excuse me, any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Oh, I'm staying.
All right, so I called the ayes. There were, are there any nays? And the abstention is Councilwoman Ruette. And item 5F, I'll entertain a motion to accept the public hearing minutes for the city budget on May 22, 2023.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Manichia.
Second.
Second by Councilman Waldron. Questions or comments on these minutes? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And an abstention would be Councilwoman Ruette. Okay, good. All right, moving into item six. In accordance with Connecticut General Statute 7, Section 7-474B, discussion and possible vote on a one-year extension of the collective bargaining agreement buying between the City of Torrington and United Public Service Employees Union Local 424 Unit 78. This is the city supervisory employees for the period of July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2024, as described in Attorney Lemire's letter dated May 25, 2023. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Manichia. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Waldron. The letter was included in your packet. Are there any questions or comments?
Hey, I have one.
Yeah, Councilwoman Hona?
Thank you. How many members are in this bargaining unit? Approximately?
About 15 approximately.
Okay.
Oh, where are you? Is that sound about right? Yeah, about 15.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions regarding the extension on this contract? Hearing none. I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for coming out. All right, item seven. I will entertain a motion to adopt resolution number 143-241 and authorize the mayor to enter into a master municipal agreement for design projects with the state and Connecticut Department of Transportation.
So moved.
Thank you. I heard Councilman Manichia and second by Councilman Waldron. Questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes, Councilman Cavanaro?
This is this is very vaguely written. Do you have any specifics that you can share with the council?
Yes, Mr. Cousins is here.
So this is a master agreement between the city and the state to set terms and conditions for administration of federal and state-funded design projects. So it's a, it's a, it's just a document that allows the state to then, once we have specific projects that come about where we where we can take advantage of, where we have funding, then specific project authorization letters are written with the backend being these these agreements. We have a similar agreement right now in place for construction projects for lots of, for example, lots of projects. So they have a separate agreement for, just specifically for design projects.
They is whom, sir?
Pardon me?
They is whom?
The state.
The state.
Yes.
Do other municipalities have similar agreements?
I believe so, yes. Yeah, any 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 municipality that has programs that use state funding would have similar agreements, yes. So the state is asking us to 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 sign this agreement for all, like, all municipalities are required now to renew this agreement for, so that when projects come about, that the backend in terms and conditions are set forth.
Okay, that's a little vague. Specific to transportation, is that what you're trying to say?
Yes, for like road road construction. So for instance, the Prospect Street project that we just did, that was a lots of project, and there is already a master agreement that's been in place for the past 10 years. They renew every 10 years roughly. So that's why they've just come up under my administration.
Well, what is triggering this? Is there a specific, does this have to do with something I read in the paper about a transportation hub? Where is it? Is it on Church Street that the state is looking to?
No.
For a busing hub?
No, that's something.
No, nothing to do with it.
To do with that?
No, yes, nothing to do with it.
Would this need to be in place in order to approve that?
This is like a, this is a 10-year renewal. This has come up for for renewal.
Oh, wait, there's a renewal of something that's already in place?
Correct.
Yeah.
Oh, that would have been nice to have identified.
No, the the contract actually is written by the state. We're actually just, you know, so this is their contract with the municipality. So.
There's no obligations other than?
No, there's none, because the the specific project terms are spelled forth in what they call PAL agreements, which are project authorization letters. They spell out the amounts, the funding amounts, and how it's to be administered.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, fair enough. Thank you.
Other questions regarding this motion or resolution? Thank you, Paul. Hearing none, I'll call the motion. Motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight. On recommendation of the Vehicle Replacement Advisory Board, the fleet manager and the purchasing agents, I will entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to act on behalf of the city to award, execute, and administer the purchase of a five, of, excuse me, five utility police explorers from MHQ of Middletown, Connecticut, in the amount of $300,836.81.
I will move it.
Thank you. This is going to, just for the record, is going to be funded from the vehicle replacement account pending approval by the Board of Public Safety, as explained in the purchasing agent's letter. So motion motion made by Councilwoman Ruette. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Manichia. Are there questions?
The comment, you know, that this actually gets vetted through the Vehicle Replacement Advisory Committee. And you know, under lots of discussion between not only our municipal employees, but also those of us who serve on it, Chris Bayes from the Board of Finance, myself, Glenn Royals.
Glenn McLeod.
And Glenn McLeod from the Board of Safety. So look for your support. Wanted to make sure you knew it was vetted by that particular committee.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine. I'll entertain a motion on recommendation of the Vehicle Replacement Advisory Board, the fleet manager and purchasing agent to authorize the mayor to execute, excuse me, act on behalf of the city to award, execute, and administer the purchase of two trucks for the Traffic Division from MHQ of Middletown in the amount of $244,742.28. This is to be funded from the vehicle replacement account. Again, I don't think this needs Board of Safety approval. This is a street department. Oh, it's Traffic Division. I'm sorry. Yes, it does require Board of Public Safety approval. All is explained in the purchasing agent's letter. Do I have a motion?
Ditto, ditto my comment.
And I made a motion. Thank you.
So moved.
All right, and second by Councilman Oliver. All right, and ditto the comments.
Ditto the comments. This has been vetted again through the Vehicle Replacement Advisory Board.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 10. I will entertain a motion again on recommendation of another committee. This is the ARPA committee. I will look for a motion to approve a request from the Torrington Youth Soccer to increase the funding that had been awarded in the first round of this grant by $8,086, as further explained in Economic Development Director's memo dated May 30, 2023.
And again.
Thank you. I heard Councilwoman Ruette. And Councilman Oliver, questions or comments?
Just a comment, you know, sitting, I feel like this is my agenda. So I serve along with, I see Laurie Pesky in the audience and a few other members of the public and other committees. Anyway, we have a lot of applications to review. We've been meeting every Wednesday morning for a few hours to review those applications. This one, we wanted to move forward quickly through the council. The others will be coming within the next few weeks. You know, as recommendations to approve or deny or deemed ineligible for this specific grant program. So this one was, you know, needed to be approved based on the timing of the request.
And I would only add that this is, these are additional expenses. Keep in mind that Torrington Youth Soccer utilizes city fields, and many of these improvements are actually improvements to the city fields. All right, other questions or comments? Hearing none. I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, item 11. I'll entertain a motion by Board of Councilmen acting herein as a water pollution control authority to approve the WPCA budget for the year beginning July 1, 2023, ending June 30, 2024.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Manichia.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Ruette. All right, questions or comments on the budget? And this is the budget that is the underlying foundation of the way, the rate increases you approved earlier. All right, if there are no questions, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 12, I'll entertain a motion by the Board of Councilmen acting herein as a water pollution control authority to approve the WPCA five-year capital improvement budget program for the year beginning July 1, 2023 and ending June 30, 2028.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Manichia. Second by Councilwoman Ruette. Right, questions or comments on the capital plan? Seeing none. Hearing none. I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 13, I'll entertain a motion by the Board of Councilmen acting herein as a water pollution control authority to approve the WPCA miscellaneous fee schedule for the year beginning July 1, 2023 and ending June 30, 2024.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Manichia. Second. And second by Councilwoman Ruette. Questions or comments on the fee schedule? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 14. I'll entertain a motion again by the City Council acting herein as a water pollution control authority to approve the purchase of one dry pit submersible pump with an N impeller that's non-clog for sole source vendor GA Fleet Associates, Inc. of Glaston Glastonbury, Connecticut, in the amount of $56,820 from WPCA Capital Fund 31, as further explained in the WPCA Administrator's memo dated June 5, 2023.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette.
Second.
And second by Councilman Waldron. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, I need first an affirmative vote, and I need two thirds of the council to approve this before we can act on it. So I'm looking for a motion to add Section B to the agenda. This would be regarding 189 Old Berville Road, a small cities committee recommendation, and 403 Torrington West Street property regarding the solicitor. the solicitation of sealed bids for the sale of the real estate. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
And second by Councilman Manichia. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we've added it to the agenda. I'll take, uh, section B A first or B1. Uh, on recommendation of the Small Cities Committee, I'll entertain a motion to approve the subordination to Northwest Community, Community, Connecticut Community Bank as described in the Treasurer's email dated June 1, 2023.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
Second.
Uh, second by Councilman Oliver. Uh, questions or comments?
Okay, just, uh, committee met before this and, uh, this is subordination at the previous loan that was made before somebody's refinancing their property. Uh, we're taking the exact same place, second lien status. It's a very small loan too, and they have a lot of equity. It's it's an easy one to approve, so.
Okay. Thank you. Are there other questions or comments? Hearing none. I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, item section B two. I'll entertain a motion to accept the Corporation Council's recommendation that the city seek sealed bids to sell real estate known as 403 Torryford West Street in accordance with the memo dated June 5th, 2023.
So moved. Second.
This is what? 403 Torryford West Street? All right, I'm sorry. I called that motion. We needed, um, okay. I need to amend that motion, uh, so the motion I'm looking for is to accept Corporation Council's recommendation that the city seek sealed bids to sell real estate known of, uh, known as 403 Torryford West Street in accordance with the memo of Corporation Council dated June 5th, 2023. Uh, this would be subject to, um, planning and zoning contingent on approval by planning and zoning for an A24.
That's correct, Mayor. Yes.
Thank you. So that's the motion I seek. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Manichia.
Second.
And second by Councilman Waldron. All right, questions or comments on the motion?
I have a question.
Please.
What is an A24? Is it some sort of variance?
Uh, so, go ahead. I'm sorry, Corporation Council.
Yeah, the, uh, the statutes require, uh, section eight dash 24 of the, uh, general statutes require whenever the city does, uh, or seeks to uh, have improvements to its asset list, uh, or to sell or to build schools or to do anything of the nature that we're talking about here, you need to get P and Z to approve it, uh, in accordance with section eight dash 24 of the statutes. That's a planning and zoning statute. Uh, and so we, we get A2 approvals for almost anything that we do either buying or selling properties. And so this just is a standard procedure.
Thank you.
And again, as you heard, that is, um, of reference to the statute section eight dash 24.
Right.
Um, and mostly what we're looking for from Planning and Zoning Commission is that this is compliant with zoning regulations that are in force. All right. Other questions or comments before I call the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 15, I'll entertain a motion to release the liens listed on Corporation Council's memo dated June 5th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
And motion made by Councilman Waldron, second by Councilman Manichia. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 16, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the tax refunds indicated on list dated June 5th, 2023.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
And second by Councilwoman Rowett. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 17, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector to authorize the sewer use refunds indicated on list dated June 5th, 2023.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, second by Councilman Manichia. Are there questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 17, I'll entertain a motion to accept the rec, oh, excuse me, item 18. I'm going to call for the motion so that we can have the discussion, um, in a controlled environment. So I will call for a motion to approve the proposed city budget for fiscal year July 1, 2023 to June 30th, 2024 in the total sum of $67,018,105. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, second by Councilman Manichia. Uh, okay, so the floor is open for discussion and I'd like to walk through, um, the cuts. What I heard at the joint meeting with the Board of Finance was, uh, that the boards wanted to see cuts that would bring these requests more in line with a mill rate that the Board of Finance may be inclined to, uh, approve. Uh, the request was to find those cuts that brought the mill rate to two mills, that would be one mill over debt service. This is new debt service that is the result of school construction borrowing. And then a second tier of cuts at one and a half mill and the third tier of cuts that would bring us to one mill. With all due respect, what I've done is, um, looked at the city's budgets, uh, because this council has no control over what the Board of Education is submitting. That's not the role of the City Council. That's the role of the Board of Finance. And, uh, but however, looking at what the Board of, uh, Education was requesting, what our revenues are, and those are still very fluid because the state budget hasn't been approved yet. We are still working through interest income calculations. I know, uh, even as late as Friday, uh, the Treasurer was providing us with some updated information on interest income. And, uh, tax revenues based on, uh, the adjusted grand list that was, uh, signed and sent to OPM in February and then gets updated, uh, March or April. So those numbers are still very fluid. There's no certainty until the state passes its budget as to what the city is going to get for revenue. We can do projections on the local revenue, but until I have those state grants, ECS being one of the, um, the biggest questions. There's, uh, nothing that this board would need to take into consideration as it relates to the mill rate or as it relates to the revenues or the Board of Education's, um, spending plan. By charter, this board is charged with receiving the department requests, reviewing them and then passing those requests onto the Board of Finance. Those requests were submitted to this board on February 15th of this year. From February 15th through, uh, May 22nd, I think that was the date of the joint meeting with the City Council. Um, I met with every department head to review their requests. The Board of Safety met with the, um, Public Safety, uh, Departments to review their requests. We had a budget subcommittee, uh, Councilman Manichia and Councilwoman Hona were members of that committee. Um, and, uh, there was a deep dive into all of the requests. Based on the feedback that I received at the public hearing, uh, we then went back and sharpened our pencils a little bit more and we've come up with another $1.1 million in cuts that, uh, the department heads reluctantly, um, absorbed and have presented for your consideration. So let me walk through those. You should all have a, um, cut list. This is a document that you saw on the 22nd. It's a summary of each department request, starting from the level one, which was the original request, level two, which was the, uh, mayor and subcommittee review, level three, which is the Board of Public Safety's review. We are now at level four. Uh, the first reduction that is on the table for your consideration is under boards and agencies. We have reduced this budget by, from $529,932 to $419,932. That is a $110,000 reduction. $100,000 of that is, um, directly related to the cannabis revenue, uh, expenses for, uh, those projected revenues need to be in line. So again, uh, City Treasurer is tracking what has been coming in and based on our experience over the last three months, uh, he's anticipating that we are far below the original projections. Uh, he's anticipating roughly $100,000 a year in revenue. So we find it necessary to reduce those expenses in the Boards and Agencies budget line item. The other $10,000 is out of the Community Development Funds. Uh, this was originally budgeted at $16,000. We attempted to increase it to $26,000. Uh, I am proposing to, uh, reduce that back to the prior year's funding. So that is a reduction of $110,000 in that department. The next highlighted item is Department Five. This is, Department Five is city real estate. This is the department where, um, quite a bit of the, um, capital improvements, uh, and building maintenance appears. The reductions in this line item are $391,331.50 and I'll just run down the list quickly. Uh, a reduction of $1,000 in overtime, $76.50 in FICA, $255 in clothing, building maintenance reductions of $17,000 and then capital improvements for sidewalk repairs, roof replacement, the Torrington Police Department improvements, public works garage and the animal control facility for the balance, which is, um, 353, 373,000. Continuing down the list is Department 20. This is Emergency Management. At last review, this department request was $53,863. We are reducing it to $40,863. This is a $13,000 reduction. Um, and this reduction is the result of, uh, Communications Line. These are the Everbridge fees for the Torrington Alert System, for those of you that are getting those text messages. The, uh, contract that we signed with Everbridge for these services was a three-year contract and it's due to expire on June 30th, 2024. So there was no need to budget that additional $13,000. Continuing down this list, the next highlighted item is Department 23. This is the Police Department. This, uh, at last review was $10,348,200. The new proposal is $10,165,732. This reduction is, uh, the, uh, Police Department's decision that five of the 10 vacancies in that department can be funded at the half year. Um, it's been very difficult for recruitment. There, it clearly, um, there will not be 10 new police officers on July 1. It's a slow process. Um, you have to get these, um, potential candidates through a interview process and into a police academy seat. Uh, those seats are not open and readily available. So the police chief recommended that we reduce this line item for funding at the half year with a goal towards January to fill them. And that reduction is $182,468. That includes the salaries and a FICA adjustment. Continuing down this list, the next highlighted item is Department 23 dash 0024. That's Traffic Management. We are proposing a reduction of $15,000. So that line item at last review was $596,984. We're reducing it to $581,984. Um, this new equipment was an increase of $30,000. Uh, we're proposing to, um, reduce that by 15. Next department reduction is in the, uh, Department 27. This is the Engineering Department. It was budgeted at $841,993. The new proposal is $833,710. Uh, these reductions uh, total $8,283.50. Uh, that is a reduction in overtime contract fees, overtime 5,000, contract fees 2,400, education and school classes $500 and the FICA, um, related to those overtime expenses. So again, that reduction is $82,283.50. Department 31, this is the Streets Department or Public Works. Last review, this was $7,535. The new proposal is $7,376,7,376,588. Uh, this is a $159,159,000 reduction. Those reductions are salt, $75,000, storm sewers, $5,000, new vehicle equipment, $4,000, Nokatack River levy, $25,000 and bridge repairs, $50,000. Continuing down the line, we have, uh, in the Health Department. Uh, this Health Department, you will recall, um, is where our LCD dispatch services are uh, are funded. You will recall during budgets deliver, or discussion, the Police Department is looking to move its CAD RMS system from, uh, its existing service into the next-gen service and the, um, related increase in dispatch services was, uh, budgeted at $375,000 for, uh, the full year starting July 1, 2023. Uh, after discussions with Chief Baldwin, with a clarification on the, um, dollar value of the, um, actual increase, he was looking at a $300,000 increase. And he agreed that, um, it was not something that would likely occur July 1st. Uh, and if we funded it for implementation starting in January, uh, that we would still be ahead of the game and it would get the Police Department where they need to be. So I am looking at that department, um, reduction of $200,000. Uh, pensions and, no, excuse me, Department 43 is the Insurance Department. Last review, this was $1,664,017. This new proposal is $1,650,017. Uh, this reduction is $14,000 and, uh, this uh, figure came to us late Friday afternoon. Our quote for cyber, uh, security insurance, uh, we were budgeting a $50,000 premium. Uh, the premium payment at $36,000. So that is a $14,000 reduction in that line item. Uh, and I think the last cut is on the second page, under contingency. Uh, you will recall that the last review, we were looking to fund this at $350,000. Uh, I am proposing that we, um, fund this at its previous year funding level, which was $300,000. So that is a $50,000 reduction in that line item. So those reductions, um, come to a total reduction of 1,103,483, bringing this budget proposal to 67,185,000. Questions?
I have a couple.
Yes.
Just, I want to make sure that I'm, I know this question has been asked. I want to make sure I understand. The city real estate is just, it's all of our capital improvements, right?
A considerable amount of it is capital improvements. There are some, Ray, if you want to.
Yeah, about 50% of the capital improvements are in city real estate. Most of them are related to actual improvements to the facilities. And then the remainder of the capital improvements are, you will find in 131, Public Works.
Okay, thank you. So then what's the other 50% of city real estate? Like, what else goes into that?
Well, as far as, I don't have the budget in front of me. Let me get it.
I do.
So the other expenses in city real estate, we have wages of 67,650. We have contract services, 34,000. We have considerable amount of the building maintenance, which is different from capital improvements. Those are annual expenditures. And cell phones, cellphone expenses, trying to think if there's anything else. We got some school and classes. Yeah, that about covers.
Yeah, just for clarity, 50% of the city real estate budget is not capital.
Okay.
50% of our capital total, about 50% is in city real estate. The majority, the bulk of this budget is capital ally.
Okay.
Where we, we originally requested And with the recent cuts of 351,000, I believe we're at 1, 1,500,000 and some change.
Thank you.
So overall, about a 1.2 million cut from our original request.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. I had another question. You know, we've been talking about what the, what the impact to the mill rate is this year for the school project. And I know originally, and what, and I'm looking at, you know, with the 85-15 split from the state, there wasn't supposed to be any impact this year still, and also in 2024. So is the, is the one mil, is that like gross before we get the money back from the state?
So the bonding and borrowing that was done this year provides that liquidity to pay those bills before that reimbursement is received. So there's, it's a cash flow situation that we found ourselves in. For the first several months, almost the first year, we were floating the cash flow without borrowing by utilizing our fund balance. This was at no cost to the taxpayers to do that because we were not paying any interest on it. But in January, we realized that the outflow of expenditures was outpacing our ability to get reimbursement from the state. We in fact waited almost four months before one of those reimbursement checks was received. So we decided that we were going to bond those funds early to provide all the cash reserves necessary so that the bills are paid in a timely basis. So yes, this debt service is is timely. Dare I say, the first year, there was no debt service because we were floating those funds out of the fund balance. So this is technically the second year of borrowing.
Yeah, that's, I was just trying to kind of like reconcile it with, you know, 2022 and 2023 was supposed to have no impact to the mill rate. And then, you know, even in 2024, it was supposed to be 0.19. So I'm just trying to figure out, just so I can understand what the difference is between that and the one mil that you're saying it is. So I just wanted to kind of understand that. But the, so the the debt service kind of goes to the point. Does that kind of get us into where we, we bonded all this money ahead of time? And the interest rates were pretty low, but now the interest rates have gone up. So we're, that's where that like, I know you don't know the exact number, but somewhere about 1.4 million that we have in the interest income comes into play?
That is correct. Yes, a bond, that's a bond premium that was paid when we sold these bonds. Yes.
And but that's not figured in. We're just hoping we can find that, that that money's going to come in and is going to kind of help us bail us out. But that's not in any of these figures.
So we don't budget net, we budget gross to gross. So what you have here in front of you are the gross expenditures for each department. The revenue is budgeted gross that is presented to the board of finance. Again, those numbers are very fluid right now because we're still fine tuning. You know, what is that interest? What portion of the interest must be reported in the bond funds or bonded project funds? Because we have to track arbitrage with that. Are we, are we earning more interest than we're paying out? Or earning more interest on the funds that had been bonded? So we're trying to separate those. It's it's a more complicated calculation. We did meet with bond counsel on this issue earlier today, just to get some clarification on what was an appropriate budgeting process. So yes, the 1.4 million is the premium that is in our in our possession right now that we can use to offset the impact of these expenses. We continue to look at what the interest is. We're also looking at what the actual tax revenues will be based on grand list growth. And we're waiting patiently to hear from the state what the reimbursement will be to the city for the mill rate cap on the motor vehicles. And that's why at this level, the council has to do its job. Your job is to look at the expenses that have been presented by the department heads and pass that on to the board of finance. So the board of finance can look at that in context with the revenues and make a determination as to whether or not the taxpayers can afford it. Once they make that decision, if the recommendation is to cut deeper, it comes back to this board, and this board would again direct where they'd like to see those cuts.
Thank you.
Sure. Other questions on the motion?
Yeah, I do. One more time.
Yes.
So the state hasn't finalized its budget. So the revenues to the city are not finalized?
That's correct.
I mean, look at the same. Where we stand right now, I'll follow up on that question. Where we stand right now is 8.42% increase for the city and then 8.09 for as it stands right now for the for that, right?
Correct.
That's what these numbers are.
Yes.
So the composite increase is what then? Is that this 8.24?
And I know that Robin is
Doesn't sound right, but.
8.41.
Yes, 8.41.
8.1?
41. What is the blended rate?
8.41.
It's the blended increase.
Blended increase, okay.
In context, if your revenues are up 8.41, we're at a zero-sum game on this. And that's why it's so important for the board of finance to have those revenue numbers in their hands so they can look at these spending plans. That's what this is, a spending plan.
Yes, I understand that, Mayor.
Okay.
But we're, I mean, tonight, I'm not, I will not vote in favor of this because this number is just too high. I have to look at what we are going to, right now, the total increase as projected right now, what we know is 11.5 mil, correct?
No.
No, no.
Absolutely.
That's a document in front of me.
That's a document in front of you because it doesn't reflect revenue.
Correct, my point precisely. So how do you expect me to approve this number, or any councilman to approve this number without knowing, you know, what ultimately we are getting from the state? And that's not my problem or yours, but that is the state's issue. And how can we approve a budget not knowing what we're, what we're going to get reimbursed from the state on all these various, various financial instruments that are in play here?
You know that we have this conversation every year when we come to this budget?
Yeah.
That is the board of finances role. The board of finance is the board that is responsible for looking at the spending plans in context with the revenue to decide whether or not the taxpayers can afford this spending plan. The council's role is to take what the department heads have requested and justified, and vet those requests, direct additional cuts, which I heard loud and clear, we want to see cuts. I brought you another 1.1 million dollars in cuts. I don't know if Mr. Kevin, you're always done.
No, go on, go on.
Okay.
Yes.
Councilwoman, we're wait.
So I'm, you know, in terms of, and I understand that this is our, our role in terms of approving the city budgets, the city department's budgets. I think they've been pretty conservative. I appreciate the work of the department heads. You know, no one wants to see an increase. But could you tell me, and you know, Jamie's not here, but, or Robin, but I'm sure you know, so that the total number of this spending for the city, how much of it is contractual? Salary benefits? You know, I always look at a budget and go, okay, is it 75%, 80%?
So I'm looking at the screen for Robin. At the public hearing on the 22nd, we provided a pie chart that showed those numbers. I don't know, Robin, if you have that pie chart at your fingertips. So right off the top, what do we know of the 5,202,000 dollar increase in the city's spending plan? Let's call it what it is. This is a spending plan. Of the 5.2 million, 1.7 million is debt service. That is the bonded responsibility for the school construction. There's some road construction in there also. But school construction, and I will remind this board, that 67% of the people that voted for the school said they were willing to see an increase in their taxes to cover that. So if I pulled that 1.7 million dollars out of the city's expense plan, you could see we're closer to 3.4 million dollars, which is really what the department heads are asking for.
I think that's, that's fair, and I think that's puts things in perspective. I always, hi, Robin. I still wanted to ask that question. Maybe you have a pie chart that you can just remind us again, what those contractual spending is for municipal.
So the increase of the 5.2, 1.8 are, is just an increase in payroll. So that includes the unknown contractual obligations that we're waiting on and the ones that have already been agreed upon.
So the only one we're waiting on at this point is the fire department, or is there?
No, police department and fire departments.
Thank you.
So as Robin has stated, if 1.8 of that 5.2 are salaries contractual and 1.7 is debt service, now we're looking at a 1.7 million dollar increase in these budgets.
Yeah, and it's interesting when you bring out the debt service at 1.7 million and 67% of the voters, not sure who.
Not the voters, 67% of the people that voted.
Yes. But the number of people who came out to vote, I'm sure city clerk knows that number. You know, this is when, you know, this is when, could we have a, could we really? I mean, I know it's done, but you know, I was always in question, could we afford this project, you know, one of the largest, you know, school projects in the state from what I understand? And I think, you know, and I do appreciate what the board of ed did in terms of their educating the public, but I think the public needs to realize that, you know, they needed to step up and come out and vote, whether it be for or against. That has always bothered me, is the number of people who, and there were two referendums on this project, so.
And twice voters said yes.
Right.
You know, it was
Percentage of people, you know, of the city that came out to vote, and I sad to see that.
So in perspective
Be, I will be, when you do a mill increase, be knocking on the doors, I'm going to send them to the board of finance, but, but no. In all honesty, they'll be, that's what they're going to focus on is the increase in the mill rate, you know, and that's the bottom line. That's what we're going to hear from our constituents as well as I'm sure the administration.
So I would take it one step further. So if you were to pull out the debt service in this 5,200,000, and then you pull out the, the salary increases both anticipated because of negotiations and arbitration, and we're down to 1.7, the other increases that are significant are the insurance costs and help me, Robin, the insurance. And it wasn't the pension, it was, there was another.
The, the dispatch? Or not the dispatch, the ambulance?
Yes, the increase in, yes, ambulance services. I, yes, yeah. So when you start pulling away what it is that we're really buying here, because that's essentially what this plan is. What are we buying?
Yeah.
For 5.2 million dollars. You know, we're buying a new school, you know, we're paying on an installment plan. We're buying insurance for our employees. We're we're paying the employees better. What do we know? We know in the police department, it is very difficult to attract any police officers to the city of Torrington because our pay is not commensurate with the vast majority of the other municipalities. We don't offer a pension. So we know going into those contract negotiations, we have to be thinking about what are we going to do to make it a little bit easier for our, our police chief to be able to attract police officers to the city.
So my only last, my last comment is, you know, I've been privileged to serve on this board for a number of years. And Robin, you weren't here, but in 2018, you know, there was a memorandum of understanding between the board of ed and the city to look at the efficiencies that could take place between, in specifically finance and HR. And, you know, that MOU was, you know, so exciting, I think, for all of us, you know, that really wanted to find more efficiencies and the collaboration between board of ed and, and our municipality. And sadly, you know, they didn't do it. You know, they pulled it out. And I'm going to point the finger at the board of ed for not continuing with that plan. Because I do think it would have provided far more efficiency in how our city actually manages our funds and our personnel. So and with that, I won't say anything else, but it's a disappointment. And I would hope that we get back on that path to have that collaboration and find those, you know, efficiencies, you know, that I, I really believe that we could have garnered, you know, here we are five years later and found those efficiencies in the spending plan that was set before us today. So, thank you.
So are still open to questions? The only other thing that I would add for the council to just be cognizant of, or just to remind you that when we look, when the board of finance looks at this spending plan in context to what the board of education is seeking, the other things that they consider are, what are those additional one-time revenues that are available? You know, is our fund balance above the 10% of operating expenses? And if it is, are there funds that are available to offset the impact of these spending plans on the taxpayers? Is the internal service fund, that's our insurance fund, is that well-reserved? Are we comfortable? Could we move some of those funds, which are, the vast majority of those funds are taxpayers' funds to provide healthcare to all of our employees and the board of education employees? If we're well-reserved and we feel comfortable returning some of those dollars back to the taxpayer in the form of tax relief to offset the budget spending plans, the board of finance looks at that and takes that. looks at that and takes that into consideration. The interest, again, our conversation with the bond council today was, if interest is earned on the bonds, the bond funds themselves, you have to hold those separate, but if the interest is earned on the sums that are reimbursed by the state school construction grant, those can be transferred over and used to offset the budget. So there's a litany of funding streams that need to be investigated before we say that this $11,500,000 increase means a 5 mil increase. And I would remind this board that I have yet to present a budget proposal to the Board of Finance that had anything more than a 1 mil increase. And in fact, over the last 10 years, I held the budgets flat with no tax increase for seven years. If I can do it again this year, I will.
And as you know, Mayor, I, I know I've said this every year, and you know I've said this every year, this process to me is, it, it's just not consistent with, I think, good budgetary management of a municipality like Torington. This 8.9% Board of Ed increase, again, you know this from my year one on the council, I've asked repeatedly to have regular meetings to the Board of Ed so we can understand this, yet those numbers go up dramatically every year, every year. It feels like we throw good money after, after bad. I don't see the return on this investment in any way, shape, or form, and I just think that in this process of kicking the can down the road, to Board of Finance to have to do some of this, some of this digging and difficult work, I think as elected, as elected officials of Torington, we have a responsibility to say no, and, you know, to say, no, this is just too much. And while technically I'm only voting on the 8.42%, I have to think like a reasonable person, common sense, that I don't know what the state revenues are going to be. There's other issues that you're bringing in, we don't know what that's going to be. I feel that the Board of Education's budget is, 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 is very high and, and continues to be, you know, continues to be a dramatic increase every year and with results that are just not apparent. And so I, I don't want to just rubber stamp. So I'm going to vote no against this, because just as a protest vote to, to this process, I think there's got to be a better way for elected officials like the city council to be able to look at the total package of what money, absolutely what real money is coming in, what are various departments outside of the Board of Ed are doing, and then what the Board of Ed, and then having a conversation that we then say, we think this is the best composite budget for the city. We, the elected officials, here you go, Board of Finance, you have other eyes, put it on it, it's back to you. So that's how I feel on this.
Okay.
I know it's not, but this process has been in place for a long time and the realities.
It's written in the charter.
But the realities of where a city like Tor, and, and so many, quote, distressed cities, which you're listed as, those realities, where so much of our funding stream has to come from the state and from other kinds of bonds and budgetary information, this is totally inconsistent with good city management. And, and so my vote is going to be no, I can't make a realistic and honest decision. These numbers are way too high and as a composite, and so that was, that will explain my vote.
Okay. Other questions or comments on the motion?
I have a couple more questions.
Yes.
On the stuff that we do have control over, the street department budget, I saw, you know, what the $159,000 in cuts were, but does that mean that the extra $400,000 for the improved skate park is still in the budget?
Yes.
Okay. And I, I know I've asked this, and I just really want to understand it. I'm looking at the, the budget impact, you know, it was kind of the document that we all were provided with as voters back when we were voting on the referendum, and we knew there was going to be an 85% reimbursement from the state, which I will still say is a bargain we should have signed up for all the time. We'll never see a school this cheap for us, but that said, it's, I'm looking at it, and it doesn't go to 1.7 million for the school project until 2026. So why, why is, why are we saying that it's 1.7 million for the, for the building project right now? And on the other side of it, I'm seeing that, like, the existing project, so the water pollution control and existing debt projects were like 4.9 million right now in expenses for 2023?
Yeah, 4.9, but.
How is that figuring into the 1.7 million?
So half of the debt service for the WPCA is covered under the sewer, excuse me, WPCA budget, and the other 50% in the city's budget. And I know if you're looking at those projections that were provided by Bill Linz, Lindsey, those, those were just projections. Those were based on, you know, our best estimate as to when the funds would be bonded. This school project, I think, is working at a very clipped rate, which I think is something that everybody should be patting themselves in the back for. So the fact that we decided we were going to bond this a little bit earlier, two, there were two schools of thought in making that decision. The US Treasury was raising their interest rates, and we were anticipating a continuation of that practice, and we wanted to get ahead of it. And as I said earlier, the cash flow, we were falling behind. I think it was in December, the state notified us that they were going to switch to, instead of a monthly reimbursement, they were going to go bimonthly, but that they were going to be missing the February payment. So there was going to be a three-month period of time where we were expending monies out and not getting the cash or the reimbursement in. So the numbers are real, these are the real numbers. And I think that the fact of the matter is, when we pull any of these numbers out of the request and you boil it down to what are we really buying in this budget? We're paying against a school that was overwhelmingly approved by the people that voted for it, desperately needed school in this community. I don't think there's any reason for us to even second guess where we needed to be with this. We were anticipating there would be a mill rate increase. I'm working on mitigating that mill rate increase as much as we can. Those decisions are made by the Board of Finance based on those revenues. And we're trying to be very planful on how we use those revenues. Do we use all of the bond premium in year one, when we know year two and three are a much larger impact on debt service? Or do we use some of that bond premium this year, hold some of it back so that we can minimize the impact next year and the year after? Same thing with the interest, we have to be very planful with that. And I would, to Councilman Cavanaro's comment about the Board of Education getting more and more and more money every year, you will see the Board of Education requests increase every year, but if you go back and you look at what the Board of Finance actually funds, it is not the case that they're getting more and more and more every year.
Okay.
So I think that's, you know, that's the other thing we have to, I, I do believe there's shared pain in all of these budget deliberations. None of us are happy sitting here, you know, crunching these numbers until the 11th hour and looking at, you know, interest rates at, you know, four and a quarter versus three and three quarters, you know, if we spend, you know, $8 million a month over the next nine months and we, you know, calculate the interest on that reduction, that's, that's what we're down to, that's what we're reduced to doing. But the spending plan that I am proposing here, if we move it to the Board of Finance, which we must do, because a Board of Finance can't deliberate on something that hasn't been given to them, our tax collector needs to get tax bills out for July 1st. I'm getting a text message as we speak from Representative Cook with some budget information that I don't have enough time to digest, but these are, these are, you know, this is information that will go to the Board of Finance on Thursday when they do the budget adoption.
Well, a question.
Yes.
So do you think they're going to have a budget by Wednesday?
Yeah, I think so. I think they're voting on it tonight. Who said that? Yeah, tonight could be midnight, so, yeah.
They close, they close session midnight on Wednesday, so.
Yeah.
They usually wait until the last minute, but I just, you know.
And I will tell you, it's all hands on deck, you know, it isn't just, you know, Robin and Dan Farley and me, Representative Cook, Case, you know, senators, Harding and, and Semenera, they're all working out there for the city. And it isn't until that final gavel, when that vote is taken, that we really know, are we going to get an increase in the ECS funding? That's a big question. The big question that goes right with that is, is an increase in the ECS funding going to go strictly to the alliance portion of the budget? Or does it come to the city, keeping in mind as an alliance district? Our ECS funding was frozen at the 2013 level, and any increases that have occurred since 2013, that's 10 years of increases, are held in abeyance. The Board of Education works with the State Department of Education to devise a spending plan. Once that spending plan is approved and they hire staff and they bring in programs and they invest in infrastructure, those expenses become, at the end of the alliance district designation, get rolled back onto the Board of Education's operating budget, and the frozen ECS funding gets restored to the normal levels. So while the Board of Education may currently be funded at 78 million and change, they also receive another $5 million of ECS funding that they budget additional expenses for. So they are currently 78 million plus the five is 83. And again, I stress this, that alliance district funding is not a grant. Those are ECS funds that are held in abeyance and controlled by the state. They cover all of the expenses. When those expenses, when the alliance district designation is eliminated, or we have met the goal of achieving those test scores, graduation rates, and all of the other measures that make us an alliance district, all of those expenses roll into the operating budget, and those revenues are restored to the city.
Yes, it's my understanding from conversations I've had with various Board of Ed members, no one was clear, no one could really remember the last time an alliance school district came off of that designation.
Even when they come off, it doesn't matter, the funding stays there. That's operating expenses, though all of those hires, all of those programs, all become a part of their operating budget. That would then go, just like the current operating budget goes to the Board of Finance for consideration, and the ECS is restored. We have been receiving $23 million and change on the ECS funding since they were designated an alliance district that was eight years ago, seven years ago.
What percentage of that, Mayor?
What percentage?
BOE budget.
What percentage?
Yeah, of that.
Right now, it's, right now, it's $5 million. I'm not sure what the percentage is. This year, if the state's budget is approved as presented by the governor, they would get another $1.5 million increase in alliance district money.
Not going to say anymore?
Yeah. Other.
It's such a sinkhole of funding with so many various rules and regulations for how we're funded, why we're funded, how the money is in to be distributed, and we as city council people have absolutely apparently no input to process, no oversight as to whether it was well spent or not spent, and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And to me, it's just very counterintuitive to how the city should be run.
Well, we do have the ability to, you know, form a charter revision committee, which would then, you know, change the process.
It will never give the city council authority over the Board of Ed, that is a statutory correct.
This is a state, this goes all the way back, I believe, to McCarthyism, when they wanted to bifurcate the two budgets because they didn't want to politicize. I believe that was the original, the historical reasoning, underpinning for doing this, you know, which was, you know, 80 years ago, whatever the hell it was, you know. The times were simple. They ain't simple now, it's absurd.
And as complicated as our budget is, you know, we only really have, you know, local revenues and state revenues. When you look at the larger cities, you get a population over 50,000, then federal funds, exactly. Yeah, all right, I'll save that, I'll save that. Soapbox speech.
It's a trigger, Mayor, for me.
Yeah. All right, are there other questions on the motion or questions on the budget cuts that I presented? If not, I'm going to call this motion. All in favor? I'm going to, I'm going to have to ask for a raise of hands in favor. Sure, let's do a roll call vote. Councilman Oliver?
I'm a no.
A no? Okay, Councilman Waldron?
Yes.
Councilman Manichia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ruette?
Yes.
Councilman Cavanaro?
No.
Councilwoman Hona?
No.
So that calls for a tie breaking, and I am voting in favor of the motion. Motion passes. Close my agenda book too soon. All right, moving on to the next agenda item. Item number 19, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads. Thank you, Councilman Cavanaro. Do I have a second, second by Councilwoman Ruette? All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Motion carries. All right, we'll go around the room. Mr. Towsey, anything to add this evening?
Oh, thank you for your support.
Thank you. Mr. Drew, anything this evening? Mr. Cousins, anything this evening? Mr. Castro, anything? Thank you. Dan Farley, anything this evening? Thank you. So we have, I'm sorry, do I need my glasses to look around the room? Is Corporation Council still on the line?
Yes, Mayor, nothing further, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk's office? Happy birthday.
Thank you, happy birthday.
All right, let's move into the next agenda item. I will entertain a motion to consider business by mayors and members.
So move.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
A second by Councilman Manichia. All in favor? Posed to my left, we'll start with Councilman Cavanaro.
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ruette?
Just an update on the ordinance, I think most of our work is done unless you share any other agenda items, but we have asked that we look at our ordinances that are extinct, that are no, no longer really pertinent to the day-to-day operation of our city. So I'm, I'm looking for, from the departments and specifically, I have to say, Sergeant Baldus, who I did have a conversation with, so it's always nice if we're putting new ordinance on the book, that we take some off. Maybe it's a lesson learned to our state legislators that, you know, you put more laws in place, you take some off. So that has never happened, but I do think with the ordinance committee, our little responsibility, I'm hoping that we can do that work. Our next meeting is August 7.
Thank you. Councilman Manichia?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Councilman Waldron?
I'll sit there, thanks.
Councilwoman Hona?
Nothing else tonight, thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Oliver?
Nothing tonight, thank you, Mayor.
All right, then, moving into item 21, I'll entertain I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public on, to comment on the agenda items only, please.
So.
Thank you, Councilwoman Manichia, second by Councilwoman Kevin Arrow, all in favor? Any opposed? Open to the public on agenda items, please.
Steve Arden, city resident. I want to state objection to the vote on a budget. The public was not provided the bud, revised budget in advance, nor were they provided a list of the cuts to the budget. So I, I believe for a public review of those items, we would like to see that in advance of these meetings and these votes. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public?
Hi, Keith Farrell again. First, I want to thank all of you because I recognize that this is probably a very stressful, arduous process and I'm sure that none of you are having fun wrangling it out. So thank you for serving our city. I do understand that, you know, nationwide property tax revenues are down decade after decade. This is a, a very difficult situation. I would like to see more focus on revenue generation, both making sure that we are sufficiently getting the revenue streams that we have, making sure that those are maximized and effective as much as possible, and also ways to bring in new business. I know we have a million excuses why we can't, but we have to find solutions around that. I think we could all agree on that regardless of who we think belongs in the White House or in the mayor's seat. We need more business here in Torrington. So I'd like to see more effort and focus on that going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell. Other questions or comments from the public on agenda items only, please? Seeing and hearing none, there being no further business before the board, I will entertain motion to adjourn.
So move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Manichia, second by Councilwoman Waldron, all in favor? Any opposed? We are adjourned.